August 25th, 2016. This year seems to be going by faster and faster every moment. So, Madam Clerk, would you please do roll call?
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand.
He's here.
Councilmember Brandow. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Sawyer. And Council President Capriolio.
I'm here. Thank you very much. Next will be the invocation, and that will be by Deputy Police Chief Farmer. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here. And would everyone please stand for our prayer, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Councilmember Quintero for asking me to give the invocation. It's my third time, and always a pleasure. I'd like to start off with the 23rd Psalm, one of my favorite Psalms that I like to read. "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside the still waters. He restoreth my soul. He leads me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thou rot and thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest the table before me in the presence of mine enemies. Thou anonest my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and we will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." Dear Lord, we just come before you today, and we ask you for your continued blessing and favor over this city. We ask you to please bless all of our city leaders, every city worker, and every resident that lives in our great city. We ask you for wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We ask you to please continue to bless us, keep us safe, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you again, Deputy Chief. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Just one change. Item 4A, which is a resolution condemning Islamophobia, is subject to the mayor's veto. So, it's not noted on the agenda, but it is subject to mayor's veto.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member Brand. I'll second that. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with Members Brand and Olivier. I'm sorry, Brandon. Brandow and Oliver Baines III are missing. Absent. Okay. Are there any minutes? Changes to the minutes of August 18th, 2016?
No changes.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? I'll make that motion, seconded by Member Olivier. We have one question by Member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to apologize, I wanted to back up a little bit. I just need clarification on the approval of the agenda. City Attorney, would I be able to ask a question regarding any of the agenda items?
You may, but the agenda's already been approved. If you wanted to change something, then you would need to ask for reconsideration.
No, I just, it's for clarification purposes.
Okay.
I can go ahead?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawyer? I just needed a clarification on your agenda item under City Council for the resolution that you're asking for. Traditionally, whenever these are brought forward, they're usually ceremonial type of items, and this one is listed as a resolution. Can I get clarification?
I think from time to time, we also bring them forward.
From what?
From time to time, we also are able to bring forward things like this so that we can vote on, and so that's what in conversations with the community advocates or from this group, that's what they asked for me to do, and so I agreed to do it.
Okay. I just didn't want a clarification. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Member Olivier. Very good. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 18th. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Next are Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Olivier. Okay. Member Baines.
Hey, quick question. City Manager, I was, got an interesting note from a constituent of mine that is a tennis player out at Roding Park, and he belongs to a tennis club, and they play out there, you know, pretty much every week, and they were wondering about a yearly parking pass for seniors. So, I know that we have a yearly pass for Roding Park for regular price, but do we have a senior price for that? And I know we talked about that at one point sometime in the past.
I don't believe we have a senior pass. We have an annual pass that applies to everyone.
Right, annual pass.
And at one time, we used to have, I think, a senior discount. I'm vaguely remembering, a senior entrance pass, but there was ultimately a decision under the master fee schedule because there was questions about how do I show that I'm eligible by that age? I have to show my license or whatever, depending on how old you are. You know, I may pass, but you know, I may not want to show everyone. But nevertheless, we can look at that as part of the master fee schedule update that we're, well, it should be coming back probably in October, November.
Okay.
With a master fee.
Yeah, if we could, and if we can maybe make a recommendation, you know, as to if we can get a senior pass, that'd be great.
Okay. And that would apply to all the regional parks?
Yeah, I would say so. I would absolutely say all the regional parks. Obviously, they're concerned with the.
And we're not going to get, we're not going to go back down to residency issue. So, if someone lives in Sanger, we apply this to anybody.
Listen, I don't, yeah, I don't want to get that far, but yeah.
Okay.
Whatever criteria we use for the regional parks, yeah.
All right, okay.
Okay, screen is clear. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate those promoted Monday at the Fresno Police Department swearing-in ceremony, and of course, welcome those new officers to the city of Fresno. I'd also like to congratulate Fire Chief Donnis and her team for being the recipients of a safer grant, and what that means, that the fire department will grow from 73 firefighters to 77 firefighters. So, way to go, Chief. Good job. I also had a great time visiting the new location for the, meet with the Board of Directors for the International Mong New Year. That new office is located in District 4, and I appreciate that. And the new, the Mong New Year will start December 26th. It's a wonderful event. If you've never been there, you have to go. It's a great cultural experience. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to speak and welcome with the ASI Board at Fresno State. These are all the young leaders that were recently elected at Fresno State to carry on their business as we do here at City Hall. They ran a great meeting. They stayed on time. They stayed on topic, and I was really encouraged by their dedication to the university as well as the city of Fresno. And finally, I wanted to thank the Valley Caregivers Resource Center. They allowed me to welcome their board members and congratulate the sponsors of that program. And if you haven't heard of the Valley Caregivers Resource Center, it's, it helps senior citizens. It's their eyes and ears of seniors. It provides many resources for families with members that have Alzheimer's disease and other situations that might need some outside care and comfort. So, it was great to be there, and if you haven't, again, Valley Caregivers Resource Center, look it up and try to get involved. It's a great organization. With that, Member Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Assistant City Manager, Renee, you were here last week and City Manager wasn't, but we had a workshop last week on the properties that had been rezoned, and Mr. Zach made a presentation. And one of the properties that was in District 5 that I was asking about, and then also drew a parallel on another one that had been approved in the county, and I believe the city had something to do with it, which was on Clinton and Marks, and I was trying to compare that with Jensen and Fowler. And the, I want to apologize because I did the, I compared them, and they shouldn't have been compared together because it's two different items as far as properties and how they were being set up and planned. So, I want to apologize to them that I was wrong on that, so. And then also, Treece Edwards, the Executive Assistant at Public Works, today's her birthday, and she wanted me to tell her happy birthday. So, I'll, you call her up and tell her happy birthday, and she's doing a super job. I asked her for a phone number this morning, and it was from another department in another city, and she rattled it right off. Didn't even look it up, so I didn't even have time to pick up my pencil, but she's actually doing pretty good. So, just want to tell you, Mr. Moser, she's, really appreciate her. So, thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. And would any member like to pull any item from the consent calendar?
Do we typically go out to the public first, or we remove first?
I was going to call the removal first, and then we'll go to the public.
Okay. One B, please.
One B?
Just for clarification.
One B?
Wait, not one B, two B. Okay, two B. Not one B, two B.
Oh, two B is under general administration.
Yeah, general administration. Did you want to, did you want to hear one B or two B, sir?
Two B.
Two B. Okay, that one's going to have its own agenda item. I thought you were.
I see. Okay. I wasn't clear on that.
No problem.
Yeah, we'll get to it, sir.
Then I'll, I guess after hearing if there's any public comment, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Very good. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Brandow.
Hey.
Member Sawyer?
Yeah, I wanted to actually pull Item 1H, please.
1H?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then with the balance of the consent calendar available, would any of the public like to speak on any item on the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll come back up here. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0 with Item 1H pulled for further discussion at 1:30. Okay, next, we'll go to general administration. Item 2A is action pertaining to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Staff, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Council. I'm just going to, I'm going to kick this off and then hand it off to Director Congzal from the Workforce Investment Board, but primarily, this is a housekeeping item, and this item is also going to be brought forward to the County Board of Supervisors as well for approval, so this is part of that process. So, with that, I'd like to hand it off to Blake.
Thank you. Give us your name and address, please, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Blake Congzal, 3224 West Tenaya Way, Fresno, 93711. I'm also the Executive Director for the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board, a joint powers authority between the city and the county of Fresno. What you have before you, in order for our jurisdiction to draw funds down from the United States Department of Labor, it has to do two things. It has to constitute a workforce board with certain members, and you all appoint half of them. The other is that we have to have something called a full-service job center, and in that full-service job center, there are a minimal number of government entities that must be co-located. So, what you have before you are the memorandum of understanding with the mandated partners that we must have in our full-service one-stop in order to draw down federal funds. And it goes over the types of services that people provide. If it's the veterans, they're providing service to veterans, AARP to the, you know, to senior citizens, and I'd be happy to answer questions about any of the particular MOUs.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll call you back if we have any questions. Thanks. Next, we'll go out to the public. Is there any one of the public that wishes to come forward and address this item? Please do so. We'll need your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none, back to the dais. Screen is clear. Motion to approve by Member Baines. I'll second it. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes 5-0 with Members Olivier and Sawyer absent. Now, we'll get to Item 2B. Actions pertaining to award of a purchase contract for emergency generators. And this is Public Utilities. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Mike Carbahal, Department of Public Utilities. This item is a recommendation to award a purchase agreement to Quinn Power Systems for the purchase of an emergency generator and automatic transfer switch to be installed at the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. The facility is capable of supplying 15% to 25% of the city's annual water, potable water demand, and is powered by the electric utility. There's presently no backup power source to operate the facility in the event of an electric utility power loss. The Water Division is proposing to install a 2-megawatt diesel generator capable of fully operating the facility during a power outage. To enable the generator to be installed during the upcoming facility shutdown this winter, it is recommended that City Council approve the Fourth Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 2016-118, adopt sequel findings of categorical exemption, adopt findings that Bay City Equipment's bid proposal is non-responsive, and award a purchase contract in the amount of $669,901.93 to Quinn Power Systems, a local company located in Selma. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would any member of the community wish to come forward and discuss this item? And I have a card for Mr. Wells. Good morning, sir.
The.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
David Wells, PO Box 1733, Fresno, California, 93717. Lived in Fresno 47, 48 years, and I want to call your attention to the fact that, which you already know, the city is 800 and some million dollars in debt. And so, with this particular investment, I'd like to ask the city to forego a decision on this for at least 90 days, or at the very least, 45 days, so that you can consider a gas turbine generator as opposed to a piston generator, and have it do double duty for teaching, as a teaching instrument, at Fresno State University and City College and the complete State Center Community College District. This is obviously a sizable investment. You're talking about a million dollars plus. And I just noticed it on the agenda yesterday because I'm bringing a guest from Italy who's studying international politics and government, and is a member of our household for three weeks, and her name's Elisa Conte. And so, we decided to come to the City Council meeting, and I noticed this on the agenda. It's been a thing on my agenda for a long time. You can get added leverage for the community and bring people into the 21st, 22nd century in the education system regarding gas turbines. This, that you're looking at right now is a company in San Diego that's owned by Caterpillar, and I'm sure that if you give me enough time, I can get Caterpillar to agree to these kinds of things, plus maybe get a million-dollar tax deduction to a charitable organization on their part to make this, help make this thing happen. This is something that is very, very important to our community. One of the reasons why is because I want to expand one of the companies that I have into hybrid electric power trains for airplanes, marine craft, and ground craft, and they would, power trains would be powered by a gas turbine electric generator. So, this kind of training that we can have for our community as a spinoff of this purchase of the city is extremely, extremely, extremely important to developing jobs in this community. Right now, we build the world's fastest speed drag racing boat. It's an internal combustion engine, and it goes 267 miles an hour and 1,000 feet, and it's built out of carbon fiber. And I want to put the hybrid electric power train in it also, so that we can have this spinoff of engineering and research development, and this would be a great aid to this community for job generation, job training, and also work for supporting any kind of gas turbine aircraft out there at the airport.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
So, let's leverage the investment and postpone this decision for just at least a small, shorter time. It's not a critical investment.
Thank you, sir. What part of Italy are you from?
Tuscany.
Tuscany. My grandparents came from Lake Como and Torino.
Yes.
Welcome. Okay, anyone else in the community wish to come forward and discuss this item? Please do so. This is your opportunity. And seeing none, we'll come back to the dais, and that would be Member Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Hey, quick question. I noticed that the initial lowest bidder was rejected because they didn't meet the bid specifications. Can you talk a little bit about that? What exactly, what specifications did they fall short in?
So, the Water Division currently operates and maintains 40 diesel generators. We've got 260 wells plus surface water treatment facility, as well as three water storage tank sites. And so, throughout those facilities, there are 40 of those sites that have diesel generation, and that, that goes back to 27 generators that were installed back in the mid-'90s following a widespread power outage. And so, there was a large number of generators that were purchased at that time, and the decision was made to standardize on the use of Caterpillar and Cummins engines in our generators. And so, we've carried that forward to today. That allows us to, you know, we still maintain a competitive bid environment because we have two local companies that supply.
Really quick, let me back up. So, you said that we standardized the motor? Was that what you're saying?
Correct.
So, you can, we can, when you say standardized, does that mean that we can only use one type of motor, or?
No, there's two manufacturers.
Two manufacturers, okay.
Caterpillar and Cummins.
Caterpillar and what?
Caterpillar and Cummins.
Okay.
So, there are two, those are two, two generator manufacturers, and they also manufacture their engines.
So, are there other motor manufacturers?
Yeah, there are other generator manufacturers.
Generator manufacturers.
And so, there are generator manufacturers that, that construct, they will, they will assemble a generator by sourcing an engine, and sourcing all the pieces, putting it together, and then selling it as a complete generator. And Caterpillar and Cummins actually manufacture their engines as well as the generator, and so we focused on them. Plus, they have two local distributors and service companies here in town.
Is there a qualitative difference between the, the other generator manufact, I mean, the generator manufacturers? I know we use two, Caterpillar and the other one, Cummings.
Cummings, correct.
But the other ones that are out there?
Yeah, there is, there is potential qualitative, you know, as part of the decision-making, and that's because when you're buying a generator, a large, single-engine generator, what you're buying is a diesel engine. And so, the ability to operate that engine for a long period of time, these are going in at sites that are going to be used for, you know, have a service life for as long as 50 years. We want to put a generator in there and run it as long as we can, so we will want to continue to maintain that generator for decades. And so, we've got generators that are well over 20 years old.
No, 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 yeah. So, what I'm trying to figure out, though, is we, the bidder here didn't qualify, didn't comply with the bid specifications, and is the reason he didn't comply because he didn't use the right manufacturer?
Correct. The engine that.
The engine manufacturer.
Right, he did not, did not propose the generator with a Caterpillar or Cummings engine.
So, I think I have a problem with that. And I'll tell you that, I'm not exactly sure unless we're saying that there are qualitative differences between other manufacturers. I'm not sure we want to restrict competition. Are the other manufacturers, let me, let me see how I want to word this. Are the other manufacturers, are Caterpillar and Cummings, Cummings the only two that are of quality, or are there onion generator manufacturers that have the same, the same type of quality that Caterpillar and Cummings do?
There may be other manufacturers that, that, you know, I'm sure produce quality products. The concern is that when we put out a bid, that we don't get a generator that has a motor that won't be supported for a long period of time.
Supported by?
Supported by the manufacturer of the engine, of the engine. So, if, so you have a company, and they build a generator, and they source, you know, they import a diesel motor from some other manufacturer, and so, so our ability to, to maintain, repair, and keep that generator in service is based upon that manufacturer of that engine continually supplying those parts and pieces that we need to keep it in service. And so, we have standardized on Cat and Cummings, who have a long history of supplying, of building generators, and have a history of supporting their products for decades. So, that's the concern. If we open it wide open, there's no limit as to what diesel engine we're going to get.
Right. I know Tommy's going to.
Sure.
But let me, let me kind of speak to it a little bit. The specifications were very clear that we were looking for a gen set that had one or two engine systems, Caterpillar, Cummings, and that's because of the standardization. We do this in fleets as well, in solid waste, and in transit. You want to have a local firm or a firm that's, has the ability to maintain across both those platforms, which is why we specified those two engines. This, the low bidder could have very easily provided, since it is a plug-and-play to some extent, since they're building, Cummins and Cat build gen sets as part of their business. There are other companies that just put together the pieces to build a generator. Kind of, you can go buy a Honda lawnmower, but you can also buy a lawnmower with a Honda engine. So, we were very clear that we wanted one or two engines before standardization. This manufacturer, this vendor, could have easily sourced or responded to the bid using one of those two platforms, but they chose not to. And so, because of standardization.
Yeah, and I think, and let me just cut you off, Bruce. I don't, I'm not necessarily saying, that's really not my issue. My issue is, why are we only limiting it to two? Are we restricting competition with other generator manufacturers and potentially under other vendors? I mean, is there not?
That's my point. Other generator manufacturers could have easily used one of those two engine platforms. This particular vendor chose not to bid, even though the specifications were very clear that we were looking for one or two.
And we're having this challenge at the wastewater plant right now. We've got Rolls-Royce engines attached to somebody else's generator, and we're not making power right now because both parties are pointing at each other, saying, well, it's not my engine, it's not my generator, it's his. And so, if we get a product where, and I put anybody's name on it, he made the engine, he made the generator, they bolt together, and I have one phone call to make when it's not working, otherwise, it's, that's not my engine. My engine's great. Call the generator guy. Well, generator comes out, no, it's not my generator, it's his engine. We didn't want to get into that, because when we need service, we want, make one phone call, have him come out and work on, you make, you figure out whether it's the engine or the generator, but we're not going to start pointing fingers at people. That's the standardization we really wanted, was that one vendor could come in, set his equipment, make it work, and again, the parts and pieces, I'll make it, you know, we can standardize on spare parts and the maintenance and the oils and all those things, but we were really looking for one person, sole, single point of responsibility, because we got caught. And again, I'm at the wastewater plant right now, where people are pointing at, well, it's not my engine, it's his generator. It's not his engine, it's the other part, and so, it's just not a position you want to be in.
That makes, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. That ties it together, and just, I'm going to, I know, I see another council member has a couple of questions, but the other thing I wanted to ask is, the gentleman that spoke about the gas turbine, what was he referring to? I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, so, we are currently going, again, back to the wastewater plant. We're going to be looking at gas turbines for the, for the wastewater plant. Gas turbine is a great technology if you run it every day. What we're talking about is something that goes to an automatic transfer switch when the power goes out, and then it fires up.
It's a backup supply.
Right, it's a backup power supply. We're going to be looking at gas turbines at the wastewater plant, because we're going to run it all the time, every day, and that's how a turbine kind of wants to be run. It wants to be running. This is not that kind of a device. This is a device that'll be, we'll exercise it once a month. Where's our PG&E friends? Hopefully, they've always got power, we never have to use it, but it's that, that kind of device.
Sure.
It's a production device, a turbine.
Well, I'll tell you, he piqued my interest, because I would certainly, you know, assuming that what he was saying was correct, and it's kind of the new technology.
Absolutely.
When we talk to generation, I would love to connect that with, obviously, our college programs here. I think there's, I think there's, that's an opportunity. It's sometimes, and we're not always on the city side thinking that way, so I appreciate, sir, you, you asking us to. to consider that, because that is right. We should certainly be preparing our college students and the workforce for the jobs of 21st century. So, he's spot on with that. And if we're looking at gas turbines for another use, I think there's an opportunity there. Okay, thank you.
And Tommy, where are we running a couple of gas turbines at the plant, aren't we?
At the wastewater plant?
Yeah.
No, they're not. It's because we're having the compatibility issue with the generator.
But we have them.
We have them, absolutely.
They've just...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay. So, it's not that this is new technology to us.
Correct.
We've been using, we've been taking gas off of the, off the waste stream at the wastewater plant to operate these turbines for quite some time. But like everything else, they need to be replaced. They just run to the end of their life cycle.
Thank you, Tommy. Member Soria.
I just wanted to ask a couple more questions along the lines that Councilmember Baines was asking at the end about...
We've closed public comment.
The new technology, or the gas turbine. But I wanted to see, so how far are we from using, or, I know that you said that we have some gas turbines already? So, in, kind of along the lines of what the gentleman spoke to, is that something that we can start exploring, like now?
Well, as Tommy indicated, we are, because the ones that we have are at the point where they need to be replaced. So, we'll be looking at the latest technology. And as far as allowing Fresno State Engineering, or whoever wants to take a look at the new application that we acquire, that as we have the current, you know, we may even donate, although they're rather big, donate the two units that we have to Fresno State and let them work on those things, or work, train on those as they evolve into the newer technology. But we can certainly open that opportunity up, once we have those new systems in place.
But for purpose of what we're voting today?
No, these are just basic standby generators that are used, exactly, similar to what we have in this building and other places throughout the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Member Olivier? Okay. So, we will close council comment portion. Do we have a motion to approve this item? I'll move to approve it. Do we have a second? There is no second. Second by Member Baines, thank you. There's a motion, a second, all is in favor, opposed. Passes seven zero. Okay, folks, kind of keep up with me here on the dais, all right? Item two C, actions pertaining to a digital billboard master lease agreement, City Manager's Office. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Well, my question, City Manager's Office. The item before you pertains to a consultant services agreement with Outfront Media for five digital billboards on city-owned property. As outlined in your staff report, the agreement will allow Outfront to construct billboards at Woodward Park, Al-Radka, the MSC, and Veterans Boulevard at State Route 99. Once the signs are constructed, the city will receive a one-time signing bonus of $325,000 and guaranteed annual rent payments of $378,000. In addition, Outfront Media will remove forty-seven static billboards within the city. Staff, as well as representatives from Outfront, are here, should you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
And to be clear, so, because the public is watching, these billboards will not be constructed in the parks. These billboards are gonna be located, basically, in areas next to the freeway, which are far removed from the green space being used by the community. So, they're on the periphery of these parks. They're not gonna be in the middle. For example, the one at Woodward Park is located on the far west side of the park. It's not improved, and it's adjacent to the freeway, which is why it's not improved. The same thing with the other locations. And Veterans Boulevard, that area already has billboards there. So, again, it's, they're not in the middle of a park. They're on the periphery of these locations.
Thank you, City Manager. Would any member of our community like to come forward and discuss this item? This is your opportunity. You'll have three minutes after you give us your name and address.
David Wells, P.O. Box 1733, Fresno, California 93717. All I want to do is call your attention and make an asterisk beside this, that this is a joint, private enterprise, city government venture. And I'm gonna be coming back to you with similar things. So, I just want you to note that.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Wells. Anyone else in the community wish to come forward? This is the perfect opportunity to give us three minutes of your opinions. Seeing none, back to the dais. Member Brandau.
Thank you, Council President. I've done some work with Outback in the past, and they're just very professional. Don't bring it up, Bruce. The mayor's listening. Okay. So, I just want to make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. I have a motion by Member Brandau, second by Member Olivier. Next on our screen is Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is someone here from Outfront Media? Morning.
Good morning. My name's Trenton Suntropak. I'm the General Manager here for Outfront Media. This is Mark Duran. He's our lease representative.
Okay. Can you tell me all the wonderful things you're gonna provide the city of Fresno?
I think one of the first benefits we're all concerned about is obviously revenue generation for the city of Fresno. As the gentleman pointed out, this is much like a joint venture between Outfront Media and the city of Fresno. We're looking forward to being partners. One of the things that we're really looking forward to is the benefits for our business, obviously, with this new inventory, obviously, the diversification of the inventory, and also the removal of some units that kind of have seen their former glory, so we can kind of clean the city up a little bit also. I think Mr. Redd has pointed out some of the benefits, obviously, from a revenue generation standpoint. And that's just the beginning of one of the benefits. And this is something that will benefit our community for years to come. Okay?
And then, one of the questions I had in terms of damage or cleanup to any of the frames, the frame itself, you know, like graffiti or a car hits it, what's your turnaround time for getting it fixed?
You know, for something like graffiti, the very simple types of maintenance that we are required to maintain on all of our structures, we have very quick turnaround time, usually a day or two, sometimes over a weekend. Some things might run over a weekend. If there is very massive damage to a unit where we need to order materials, maybe it's additionalized steel, or perhaps even a new screen, because these will be digital, some of those parts, our manufacturer needs to be sent to us. So, we'd be at the mercy of those manufacturers on the very top end, for what we understand. And our experience with the digital screens, the worst-case scenario would be three to four months turnaround time for those digital screens to be manufactured and shipped. But for the most types, for most part, the average type of maintenance that occurs on these types of signs is just a couple-day turnaround.
And how often do you have your, do you have a person that goes through checking on them to ensure that they don't need any cleanup or repair on the frames?
Yes, absolutely. We have, we have a crew right now, consists of about twelve individuals. They're always in market, checking out our inventory. One of the beautiful things about our inventory and our business is that we're obviously very visible. That's the point. So, we're always looking at our inventory. They're on high-trafficed areas. So, we're very well aware of when those types of situations arise. As for scheduling, some type of maintenance that's scheduledized, we do have somebody that will focus on that on a weekly basis, just to make sure that, because these are gonna be near our parks, or on a lot of our city surfaces here, that obviously we want them to look professional, and we want that to reflect Outfront Media, but also our partnership with the city.
Would you also, if you don't mind, email each of the council members in whose council district that the sign is in? Because sometimes, as, you know, whenever there's cleanups or damage or whatever, graffiti, they call the council member's office. A constituent will call, and then we'll have a number to call you at and let you know as well.
Absolutely.
So, if you don't mind doing that, I think it'd be real helpful for us. And then also, the final question I have is, are you responsible for any of the cleanup around the frame, you know, the landscaping or anything? Are you gonna provide any of that?
The general area around the billboard, the footprint that we're using, we will be responsible for that. There's, in the contract, there's discussion. It's actually in the contract in terms of the maintenance of some fencing around the actual structure. We will be in full responsibility of that as well. So, obviously, the property within that perimeter, we are gonna be responsible for.
Okay, because I know that's something near and dear to Councilmember Brandau's heart. So, sure, he'll be on the lookout for all five locations.
We'll make sure we make them look good.
Thank you very much, and look forward to getting those, the email contacts for you. Appreciate it.
Send them immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. I have a few comments and then some questions. I do appreciate the City Manager for, as part of the negotiation, including space for the city to be able to do some announcements when we do have important community events and so forth. So, thank you for working and including that. Definitely appreciate it. I know that there's five locations. I was just wondering, and I know that this is kind of, I guess, the first in, you know, there may be more, I don't know. So, just wanted to make sure, and I ask, are there any future plans, or is there, is this just kind of a starting point, or what are we planning?
So, the number of signs right now is based on our discussions with Outfront, on what the market saturation, or what the market demand is. We don't want to be in a situation where we put, and they don't want to be in a situation where we put so many signs out that we devalue this opportunity. So, right now, based on their market analysis, they deem, right, that five signs are adequate. There may be an opportunity in the future. We had some other sites that were identified in the RFP, and if there's a decision ultimately made based on, again, a change in market conditions, then that contract can certainly be amended and come back later on and add another sign. But right now, it's based on what they believe is the highest return on investment.
And are these agreements generally this long, in terms of the length?
Yes, because of the capital costs associated with putting these signs, they need some assurances to be able to make back that initial investment, because I think these signs come in at a little around a million dollars per sign, or somewhere in that area.
And do we know about how much we anticipate to generate?
As we had indicated, there's a, I'll let, we'll only get into the details, but there's a one-time signing bonus, and then there's an annual revenue based on a minimum guarantee, and then a percentage of net gross after they have to pay some commission cost. But, well, I want you, it was in our budget, but I can't really recall off the top of my head what the numbers exactly were.
Yes, Council, Councilmember, the one-time signing bonus is $325,000 once all of the signs are up. We, that, within that year, we'll have a guaranteed annual rent payment of $378,000. And then Exhibit C in your packet has the annual revenue share per sign, the percentage that would come to the city. So, after the sign is up and operational for one year, we would either have the guaranteed minimum annual rent payment, or the annual revenue share, whichever is greater.
And, well, how much is that minimum guarantee?
We didn't, do you want to estimate how much the revenue would be per sign?
In discussions with Outfront, they were comparing us to other markets, and so... Yes. It's not in your report, because at this point, it would be speculating. But in discussions with Outfront, we were just talking about comparing our signs to other similar markets. So, that's why we were going with just the minimum annual guarantee, just as, you know...
Which is a 378?
Right.
Minimum?
Minimum.
So, we could be essentially making?
In essence of, yeah, in excess of that.
Okay. Perfect. And then, this monies are all general funds monies?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And then, another question that I had, so I know that there are other existing, the static billboards, I think about forty-seven. Are any of them gonna be removed under advertisement contracts, or?
Under, pardon me?
Are any of these expected to be removed, the existing, just the static ones?
There are forty-seven proposed. They're also listed in the last exhibit in the report, all forty-seven locations. And again, once the signs are up and operational, then the forty-seven would come down.
Will start coming down.
Exactly.
And so, these contracts that are currently in existence with these forty-seven, they've expired, and so we can go ahead and remove them, or?
I mean, that's a question for Outfront.
Are these all Outfront Media's static billboards?
Correct. My name's Mark Duran. I'm with Outfront Media. Yeah, correct. They're all Outfront billboards.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, you guys will be moving them as soon as?
As soon as, yeah, as each location goes...
As soon as the five go up?
Yes. And the way it is, is each location goes up, those boards that are listed in the exhibit will come down.
Okay.
We have them matched. So, as you know, as they go down, as we build a board, so many will come down.
Okay. And then, I had another question regarding, I believe it was in page ten of the agreement related to the repair or replacing when the digital board is damaged. And it says you guys would notify the city in writing. What's the timeframe of that?
Again, it goes back to, as Trenton spoke earlier, depending on what the damage is, and how long, or what the extent is. To me, that was more in an extreme case, if it were to come to that.
Okay. And then, the last thing that I noticed in the agreement is that you guys wouldn't be required, or you guys aren't requiring, Bruce, to pay any rent if the premises are, or the billboards are damaged, and they have a ninety-day window? Is that what I understand from the agreement? And is that typical, I guess, in terms of no rent for that period of time? Is that, I'm assuming you guys have other contracts with other folks?
We do. If there is damage, our agreements do allow us to temporarily stop the rent while that repair is made, if it is extensive. Normally, that does not happen at all. We've, I've been here eighteen years. We haven't done it. So, I don't really foresee it happening in this situation.
Perfect. I think those were all my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
City Manager Redd?
Just wanted to follow up. The annual minimum guarantee, it's near the back of the council's item, Exhibit C, is $378,000 a year.
Next is Member Brand.
City Manager, this is a direct result of the Asset Management Act and the recommendations from the strategic study?
Yeah, this is one of the recommendations that came from that effort.
And there was a, I believe, a CBS proposal about 2011 that I think identified, it was like $200,000, and I think it identified some additional sites. Has anything ever been done on those sites?
We used those sites, again, as part of the RFP. And in negotiations with Outfront, I essentially asked, if those sites were, if you were given an exclusive agreement, and those other sites were not allowed for the use of digital billboards, would the value of this agreement go up? Through a little arm twisting, the answer was yes. So, again, it goes back to market demand and trying to prop up the value of these in the current market. So, at some point in time, we'll come back and revisit those sites. Give you an example, the Convention Center was one of the sites that was included in the RFP, and it really didn't trigger any kind of interest from any, either of the two vendors. Same thing with Rotting Park, just did not generate any kind of interest. And this would be on the outside of the park, next to 99. But... And this would be on the outside of the park, next to 99, but depending on if these things take off, and there's a high demand, then we'll certainly come back and look at expanding this contract in the future.
Okay, thank you. Could you guys come up? I just want to confirm, so your methodology is probably, was based on traffic count? Is that how you evaluate the location?
Partially on traffic counts. This digital network, and that's what we're marketing this as, an opportunity to have an entire network. As a single unit, standalone, there's less value. Having a proliferation obviously creates a supply and demand issue that we obviously want to avoid also. So we found that this is a good number of units that the market can function on, it can be economically viable. Locations chosen, if you'll notice, are all along the highways and freeways around the city, obviously because of the traffic counts, some of that because some of these areas don't have much representation for us now, and there's obviously a high demand for that for our local and national advertisers. So those are all things that we took into consideration when we put this network together.
Do you guys also consider, like, naming rights at facilities? Or you're primarily just electronic billboards?
We are in the out-of-home business, and we consider pretty much everything out of home. As we have now become Outfront Media, we were formerly CBS Outdoor. We have become a media company, and over the last year, we're looking at a multitude of options to be able to offer our clients for different advertising opportunities. So naming rights and things like that are things that we are considering as a company, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I noticed, as a follow-up too, back in the 2012 study of the Convention Center, that the value of naming rights is directly related to the activity at the turnstile, that we have made a lot of progress in bringing more people there, we're actually making money on some of the, on the co-promotion idea. So I think as time goes by, we can revisit those ideas on naming rights for the Convention Center, and also...
Well, if I could remind council during budget, you gave us, gave me direction to work with SMG. We are in the process of entering into agreement for naming rights, a consultant to go out and see if they can generate a naming rights deal.
So hopefully, you know, you add all these together, you're probably going to be about a million bucks, maybe more, and that's money that's for the general fund, that can be used in a lot of different ways. And then just the final comment was on the Asset Management Act, there are other items that were listed as opportunities either for revenue generation or cost reduction. For example, on some of our leases, the best example I can think is the one where we lease on the fire department, where the cost is, I believe, $600,000 a year. We could probably go out and buy a parcel and build it and finance it, and have it paid off in three or four or five years, and save a half a million dollars plus a year. Okay? And then also, the Muni Yard, there's vacant spaces there, trying to find leasing opportunities to fill in those spaces. I know we have the lease down the street, I think in finance, unfortunately stuck on a long-term lease, it's about 7,000 square feet.
So right now, we're looking at construction management, whether or not we can find a better opportunity for that. And then, as far as the MSC, thanks to Mr. Esquera, and more importantly, their subcontractor, CH2M Hill, we have the buildings that MSC filled right now, and the tenant is paying $1.40 a square foot pursuant to our facilities assessment audit.
So I think as we go forward, I think at least I'd like to see before the year's over, going through that list that they'd recommended, and some of the ideas you had, Bruce, to, you know, fully implement these ideas to both cost efficiencies and revenue generation, to just start making a long-term sustaining funding stream for the general fund, maybe up to a couple million dollars. Has anybody made a motion on this item?
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I have a card here, but public comment has been closed, so we apologize for that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Moving on to Item 2D, actions pertaining to a lease agreement between the City of Fresno and SkyWest Airlines. Good morning, Airport Director. Good to see you again.
Good morning, Council President, Council Kevin Michael, Director of Aviation. You know, we do a lot of things at the airport, a lot of things that the public notices, and we do a lot of things behind the scenes in terms of, we have hundreds of leases, and SkyWest is probably our most valuable lease that we have. It's not, it's just behind the scenes that the public really doesn't know about. But for us, this is a big, big deal. I mean, compared to the STEM standard lease I may come to council on periodically. This is big because about a year ago or so, SkyWest decided to construct in addition, a new maintenance base in Boise, and we go, oh, okay. And in this, this base agreement was going, is set to expire next year in 2017. So I said, what's the long-term viability of this base in Fresno? Because of the significant amount of jobs it brings, the revenue stream it brings to the airport, which helps our operation. So myself, along with my Assistant Director, Dan Weber, made a trip to headquarters. We met briefly with the CEO of SkyWest, and we met with the Executive Vice President of their maintenance operations, and come to find out that, yes, the Fresno base is still a viable part of their maintenance structure throughout the United States, which was a relief. Not only that, they were interested to find out how it can be modified to accommodate the new generation of regional jets, so, which they are, will be doing at the base. So that was a huge relief. So what we did is, we went ahead and negotiated with them over the last nine months or so, a new 10-year plan, and this is a year ahead of when this was going to expire. We just want to stay ahead of this curve. And so this is a huge, huge win, not just for the airport, but for the community in the region to have that base here. 175 skilled jobs that they have, they want to expand their parking lot, so forth and so on. So this is, this is a big deal. I do need to read into the record one typo we discovered in the agreement, so I'm going to go ahead and do that real quickly, and then I'll leave it for questions. Section 6B2, page 6 of the agreement, subsection entitled "Construction Costs" currently reads, lessor, meaning us, the city, is responsible for the cost of expanding their parking facility. It's a typo, it's a lessie, meaning SkyWest is going to be executing that project. And we already contacted them, and go, yeah, yeah, it's a typo, so we're going to do a page swap, but I just wanted to read that into the record. So I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would any member of the community wish to come forward now and comment on this airport, SkyWest item? Please do so. It's your opportunity. You have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, back to the dais. Screen is clear, I'll make a motion to approve. Seconded by Member Brandau. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 4-0 with, thank you, sir, with Members Olivier, Brand, and Soria absent. Okay, that's 10:03, so we're going to go to the 10:00 AM matter, which is a scheduled council hearing and matters issue. It's a hearing to consider the amendment application on behalf of PG&E. This is a District III item, and it's a DARM-sponsored thing. Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here.
All right. Good morning, Council members. Council President, Chris Lang, Planner with the Development Resource Management Department. At this time, staff has nothing to add to the report and is available for any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Next, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this item? This is the perfect opportunity. Again, you have three minutes. Seeing none, back to the dais. The screen is clear. Do I have a motion? Motion by Member Baines, seconded by Member Quintero. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 6-0 with Member Brandau absent. Okay, let's go back now, since we have another timed item, we'll go to Item 2E on General Administration, and that's a resolution regarding the redemption of the Blosser Judgment Obligation Bond Debt Service. And this is from City Manager's office. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Renee Smith, Assistant City Manager. This item before you today, as you may recall, back in 2002, based on a settlement, the city issued judgment obligation bonds, and as a result of that, it really ties up title to the property. And we've been making annual debt service payments on that property, and back in January, we actually entered into an option agreement with Garrick's Inc. to, for them to lease the property, and then eventually purchased it once we were able to transfer title. As a result of that agreement, and them exercising that option and making their lease payment at this time, we are in a position to be able to pay this debt off 10 months early. And what that does is that releases the debt, as well as allowing us to pass title to the Garricks. Additionally, it frees up the remainder of the property, so as we are seeking how we want to work with other potential buyers, there won't be this issue of it being tied back to the lease. So staff is recommending approval today. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Taking this out to our community, is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Please do so. This is your opportunity. Seeing none, back to the dais here. Do we have a motion?
Oh, make a motion. It's actually, it's in District 2. It's a citywide situation, because it's financed, but because the property's in District 2, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Member Brandau, for the motion. Seconded by Member Baines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you very much. So we are a little bit ahead of schedule, which is a good thing. So we'll take unscheduled communication. I have a couple of cards. First is Gary DeSecle. Good morning, Gary. And you'll have three minutes to address this body.
Good morning, sir.
Sorry, Paul, I just going, I just working the fare. First of all, we got a problem in the Greyhound bus station, and also Amtrak. I go pick up my ticket, going to the, they're coming up September, and I'm a busy man, because I just working the fare every year. First of all, the Greyhound bus station, they all have no supervisor, no name tags, and nothing, and I already talked to the girls and buy a ticket, and she is so rude, nasty and stuff. And I already told her that I says, I said, you harassing me, I'm going to go talk to my boys. And, you know, it's not appropriate and stuff like that, because, you know, this man here is not doing nothing wrong to Fresno, and, you know, and I know her boss's name's, I can't remember her name, but she goes to Bakersfield all the time, and she goes back and forth. You need to do something to talk to Member 3, and she didn't need to talk to them, because she's names, I can't remember her name, but I'll figure out later. Because the Amtrak station is not doing nothing, and also is my mom's on the train the way back, and waiting for her to get off the train, and they're trying to keep me out for it, and they not have my ticket. So I just waiting for her, and then they're so rude, both of them, so to frustrate the Greyhound bus station, so you're going to have to do something valid for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Next card I have is Rick Morris. You'll have a name and address, please, and then three minutes to convey your message to us. Good morning.
My name is Rick Morris. I live at 334 East Olive Avenue in Fresno, California. And basically, because of all the tension that's been brewing in the city, I've been keeping a pretty low profile, and I've been praying a lot, and I've been asking the Lord what I should or should not do, and the Lord prompted me to come here and speak to you today about forgiveness. Before I get on the topic of forgiveness, I'd like to give you a little bit of background about myself, and that way you'll understand my perspective of why I'm speaking about this here today. I was born in 1961 in Clark County Hospital, Las Vegas, Nevada, during the nuclear testing, and most of my life, my mom says that explains a lot, but it didn't explain why I ended up enquired out the hospital in 2008 addicted to OxyContin. I was so desperate, so despondent, that I was begging the Lord in the hospital, "Take me now, be quick, be merciful, painless if possible." Apparently, I was so disruptive that the nurse came and told me that I was upsetting the other patients. At the time, I really didn't care who I was upsetting. And I prayed, and the Lord told me, "Son, you are welcome home anytime that you're ready, I just don't believe that you're ready yet." I called my bishop, I got a blessing, and it was a very powerful blessing. Four months later, I came up to Fresno and opened Medmore Clinic. Fast forward to recently, the tensions in this city have been building really bad for the longest time. I'm not from Fresno, I've been watching it from Visalia, but most recently, it's been building really bad, and I realized that I am a part of that. So I'm here today to ask your forgiveness for anything I may have done that caused you distress, discomfort, or anything of the sort. And because my Lord won't allow me to ask for that, which I'm not willing to offer, I'm offering forgiveness to anybody who's willing to accept it. You don't have to desire it, you don't have to ask for it, it's just there. What we need to do as a community is, we need to heal before it becomes so bad that it's nothing but an adversarial position and people get hurt. So I think what we need to do is just contemplate the concept of forgiveness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to come forward and discuss any item during our unscheduled communication? This is the opportunity. Seeing none, we'll go back to the agenda. It is 10:12, so we'll hear our 10:10 item, which is an appearance by Costel Furea to discuss water quality in northeast Fresno. Are you here today? That last name is F-U-I-O-R-E-A. Okay, no one's coming forward on that item, so we'll move on to the 10:15 item, so we'll have three minutes. And before that occurs, I don't have any jokes, my voice is horrible, I can't dance very well. My leadership skills is it. Yes, sir. 4A, okay. Thank you. Okay, Item 4A is a resolution condemning Islamophobia in the City of Fresno, sponsored by Member Soria.
Is there any way that we can do that after we come back from lunch? There are some folks that were supposed to be here for that, and so we thought that we wouldn't get to that till the after lunch.
You're sponsoring, whatever your pleasure is.
If, yeah, if we could come back to it, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have two minutes before we can do the next timed item, which is a workshop on the Downtown Plans and Code, and that's sponsored by DARM. I see Mr. Zach here, ready to lead us down the path. So please be patient for a minute. All right, folks, it is 10:15. We can now proceed with our timed item of 10:15 workshop, Downtown Plans and Code, from DARM and Assistant Director Dan Zach. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Members of the council, I'm Dan Zach with the DARM Department, and I'm very pleased to be able to bring an update to you and do a workshop on the Downtown Plans and Code. So as you... So as you all know, we've been working on these documents since about 2010. And so a lot of work was done during the years immediately preceding that, or following that, rather. And then, and then plans were put on pause and now we're resuming that progress and getting it wrapped up, which we're very excited about. So some folks have wondered, well, there was so much progress made in those first couple of years and then what happened? So after 2012, there was a big shift to the Fulton Mall project. There was an opportunity to get Tiger Grant and resources, staff resources needed to be shifted to that as well as things like BRT. And so, and then it became apparent that the general plan really ought to go first. We ought to think big picture and then narrow down into some of the more precise planning for areas like downtown. So I think in the long run, that made a lot of sense, but it was a little bit of a shift. And then we obviously moved on to the Development Code. And so the Downtown Plans and Code represent the last piece of the puzzle to all of this work we've been doing on modernizing and cleaning up our planning procedures and processes here in the city of Fresno. And so my hope is that not only is it the final piece of the puzzle, but it's really the crown jewel to the good work that we've all been working on together. So a public draft was put out in 2012 and we got a lot of good feedback on that. And then also we've sort of refined the overall vision for the city and the way we've been doing things. And so some changes have been made since the 2012 drafts that you all may have seen. And so I'm just gonna talk a little bit about, you know, what has changed. So there are two plans associated with this effort. First one is the Fulton Corridor specific plan, which focuses on the commercial and mixed-use heart of the urban downtown. And then the Downtown Neighborhoods Community Plan focuses on some of the residential areas immediately adjacent. Lowell, Jefferson, some of the southeast and southwest neighborhoods, Jane Addams neighborhood. And so together, you know, those two plans come up with a vision for, what are these areas gonna be like when they, you know, in the future? And how are we gonna get there? What kind of infrastructure needs do we have? What sort of urban form should they have to really be as prosperous as we'd all like them to be? And then the third piece is the Development Code that would implement all of that and make that a reality so that as projects come in, as infill sites develop, each one of those gets us incrementally closer to that vision and really gets us closer to the revitalization that we'd all like to see. Originally of the three, this is the one that changed the most since the 2012 version. And that's because we realized, once the Citywide Development Code was in place, this really ought to work as part of that bigger Citywide Development Code. Originally, when work was started on this in 2010, we were still working with the 1962 zoning ordinance. And the idea of plugging this contemporary form-based code into that framework didn't make a lot of sense. So they built the Downtown Development Code to stand alone, which was the right way to go in that setting. Now we have this brand-new, you know, really great Citywide Development Code that's been thoroughly updated and modernized. And now having something standing separate from that doesn't make sense. And so we don't want people to have to learn two different sets of procedures, two different vocabularies, two different ways of doing things. So the Downtown Development Code's been reworked, reconfigured to work as a module to the Citywide Development Code. And if and when it's adopted, it will seamlessly integrate into that document. And moving forward, it'll just be the downtown section of that Citywide Code rather than the separate thing that has a separate way of doing things that people have to learn. So we standardized vocabulary and the layout and everything so that people who've been getting used to the Citywide Code since we adopted it at the end of last year, it's gonna look very familiar to them now. It's gonna, they're gonna know how to use it right from day one. So that took quite a bit of work to reconfigure it, but we think it was worth it so that, you know, it's much easier for people to deal with. And at the end of the day, it still gets us that walkable, attractive, mixed-use downtown that these plans envisioned from the beginning. So this is the zoning map that we're proposing as part of the Downtown Development Code. And so one of the things that we did was find a way to better integrate this into the way we do zoning throughout the city. And so it's going to be embedded into the Citywide zoning map and use same terminology and layout as the rest of the zoning code. And so if you look at some of the residential areas, for example, there were separate zones in the original version of the Downtown Code that were really trying to get us at the same place, we realized, as zones like RS5 in the new code and mixed-use neighborhood. So we went through and translated those areas to zones that we already have in place as of December so that if you're doing a, you know, a neat little duplex in the Tower District and you have a good model and then you wanna come into southwest Fresno here and do the same thing, you're working with the same basic set of rules. You don't have to learn a whole other system. Ditto, if you wanna do a mixed-use building on Fresno Street through southwest Fresno, then you can bring that model from Tower or Blackstone and make it work there too because the system is the same. Where we really needed something entirely new was in the main downtown triangle of Divisadero 41 and 99. That's where we're having, you know, where we're trying to create the really metropolitan, cosmopolitan, urban core. Nothing in the Citywide Development Code will get us where we need to be in order to bring that dream to reality. So there are three new zone districts in the Downtown Development Code that get us there and take that vision in the two plans and create standards to get us to where we wanna be. So the first zone is Downtown Core. And so that's primarily the Fulton Mall and High-Speed Rail Station area. It's the heart of the heart. And so there, we're going for 15-story buildings maximum. We want our highest densities to be there. We want that to be the most intense part of the city. The next zone is called Downtown General. This is where we have a lot of civic uses.
Hey, Dan, real quick. You said the 15-stories maximum. Why did we put a max, why did we put a maximum?
It's a great question. So those height limits were developed in the early days of the plan as they were trying to figure it out. And there were a couple of main reasons for that. I'm sure a lot of people agree with me on this. I'd like to see us having a skyline that competes with cities of our size like Pittsburgh and Cincinnati and cities like that. What we realized, though, is what we're dealing with in downtown Fresno right now is, first of all, big geographic scale. We have, the main urbanized area of our downtown is comparable to the downtowns of Detroit and a lot of really, really big cities. And yet, a lot of it is empty. So we've projected that we can fit about, or that we can, you know, expect, if we're really successful, about 10,000 residential units, a couple million square feet of office space. And if the original wave of buildings are really big, then there's not gonna be enough to go around and enliven all the different corners of downtown. And so what we'd like to propose in this first round of development is, you know, let's get mid-rise really going everywhere and enliven all these blocks that are sleepy right now. And then when we start to get, you know, the hustle and bustle that we're going for, then we can, you know, take a look at getting it up to where we'd all like to see it eventually go.
Okay, so this is kind of, so that makes sense. So instead of saying, "This is not a forever maximum, this is a right-now maximum."
Yeah, nothing would make me happier than bumping up later. And I think we should definitely consider that. So the second zone is very similar, except it's got a lot of civic uses in there. You have the Convention Center, City Hall, County Courthouse, Federal Courthouse, so on. And so what the code proposes is to, you know, encourage more civic uses there, but also to fill in the spaces in between with mixed-use development and make this more of a neighborhood area also, so it becomes a little bit more multipurpose in nature. And that would have a 10-story height limit. And then in the areas around it, Mural District, Chinatown, South Stadium and such, would be called Downtown Neighborhood. And that would be a little bit more residential in character, but still a wide variety of uses are allowed. And you would have a six-story height limit there. And then there are a few pockets, namely around the L Street historic area and the St. John's historic area where the same mixed-use zoning applies, but there are extra development standards put in place so that new buildings fit in with the residential buildings that are presently there. So you match the setbacks and the heights in those little pockets and keep that neighborhood feel that has been maintained over the last 100 years. But still encouraged filling in some of those empty spaces that we have in those neighborhoods. We also added a retail strategy in this, in this version of the plan. The original version didn't have a retail strategy. And it wisely encouraged ground-floor retail because that's, you know, what a lot of the great downtowns have. However, we looked at this triangle area and did some math. And if every area built out with ground-floor retail, it would be more retail space than the Mall of America in Minneapolis, which is the biggest shopping center in the US. We can't support that, even if we're really fortunate to get those 10,000 units and attract people from other parts of the community to visit this, this part of town more often. We're still not gonna support that, it's just bigger than what our market can bear. And so what we realized is, in reality, we wouldn't get more than the Mall of America. In reality, what we would get is a shop here and then a couple blocks of nothing and then a restaurant there and a couple blocks, nothing, it would really scatter. And whether it's a suburban shopping center or an urban downtown, the best retail districts have that critical mass where you have continuous shops and restaurants all together in a pretty tight area. And retail experts will always advise you, I've heard retail experts say, "If you go more than 50 feet between shops, people aren't walking. They'll go the other way because that gap is unappealing." And so we wanted to really encourage that concentration where it counts for the most. So streets like Fulton and Mariposa and Kern Street, where we have a really good array of restaurants and shops that have gone in in recent years, we say, "Okay, that's where we're gonna focus, we're gonna require that ground-floor retail." And that's the solid black line, those streets. And then, and then the dash streets, we say, "Okay, it's optional. If retail goes out into those areas too, that's good. We have some of those kinds of businesses in some of these areas." And then the white areas, the white streets, we say, "No, we'd actually restrict retail there. You could do a corner, little corner store or a little deli on the corner, but we wanna keep those small and encourage the big stuff to come into the Fulton Core and some of those other areas where we really get the bang for the buck out of them." And then so that way, we can really create a successful retail environment. And then this is another thing, over time, perhaps if we're lucky enough to have all these areas bursting at the seams with shops and restaurants and entertainment venues, then maybe this expands too. And so just like the rest of the Citywide Development Code, there's a permitted use table. And so you find your zone, you find your street, and then you figure out if your use is allowed or not. Main difference here is that just about everything is permitted by right. You know, there's some restrictions on some of the ground-floor uses, like I just mentioned, in a few areas where it's necessary to get the activities that we want and some restrictions on industrial. And that's about it. You know, we wanna see everything, you know, coming together in this part of downtown because successful downtowns are multifunctional. So instead of focusing on use so much, we focus on the form of buildings. And so we've, you know, we're a little bit late to the downtown revitalization game. A lot of cities got started really doing good things in the 90s and we've been at it for a couple of years now and keep getting better and better. One good thing about not being the first is that we can learn from other cities. And so one of the things we're trying to do is match the urban form that worked best for us in the past, still works for us in places now and has worked great across the country. This is not it, this picture right here. This is not the urban form of the successful downtown. It's fine in other settings, but any downtown that tries to look like this is not gonna work. And that's been seen across the country. Calling it downtown and putting a banner doesn't change it. It's the physical form of these places that make them successful. And so this is really what a successful downtown is all about when you get right down to it. There's a lot of variety out there, but having that nice pedestrian environment and having that sidewalk activity, that is the common thread through all these places. And so this is a small town in Washington State called Port Townsend that I really like to visit. And whether you're in a little place like that, that's very far removed from the metropolitan area or in Pasadena and Southern California, a gigantic metropolitan area, the basic pattern holds the same. The buildings are up to the sidewalk, sidewalks are wider, pedestrians are comfortable, and you get that compact mixed-use pattern. Now, just widening the sidewalk and bringing the building up to it is not enough. This is actually right around the corner in Pasadena. And as you can see, this block is dead. We can't really afford mistakes like this in Fresno if we're gonna be successful. And so rather than nitpicking use, we focus on things like this. Let's get the buildings right so that we don't have, you know, dead spots as we start to build out. Interestingly, Pasadena tore this down. This is a Macy's and they let one side of it be blank and they regretted it and they're tearing it down and rebuilding it now with active frontages on this, on this block. I gave a presentation a few years ago and Pasadena showed this picture and roughed them up a little bit over it and they were sure to let me know, "We're taking that down." So even a town like Pasadena, which is very successful, can't really get away with mistakes like this. So we need every building to get us closer to our goal and to not only be successful as a development project, but to help make downtown as a whole more successful. So this is the pattern that you wanna emulate, right? This is Pearl District in Portland, but you see this in a lot of places. And that sidewalk focus, the active ground floors. This street is a retail street, but on side streets that don't have retail, you can also have active ground floors. This is in San Diego where they have a ground-floor residential unit with a porch and a little stoop. This is a high-rise building, but the ground floor of this high-rise is probably a 30-story building, but that's what the ground floor looks like, which makes it feel very comfortable, even though you're in a big metropolitan city. And we've been getting pretty good at this. We're about 600 units into our downtown housing construction period. And, you know, we keep getting better and better. And a lot of these principles are working well here and people are moving in and it's great. This is a project by the Housing Authority, I'm sure we're all familiar with it. They actually followed the draft Downtown Development Code to a T to really, you know, they wanted to be a good partner and they wanted to show that this stuff works. And they've been very successful with this project too. And this is the kind of thing, you know, filling in empty spaces in downtown with buildings like this can really help bring us back to life. And so we focus on things like frontage coverage. How much of the sidewalk is lined with a building? Trying to minimize the gaps between buildings and putting parking lots behind rather than in between buildings or at the back of the sidewalk. To make, in the above picture on this slide, that's Fresno. You know, this is how we used to do it. And so it's a little bit of a Back to the Future kind of thing for us. Pedestrian access, having those entrances at the sidewalk. When you go from shop to shop, building to building, you do that on the sidewalk. You can have another door in the back off of the parking lot, that's great, but we need a door at the sidewalk too because that's what puts those people on the sidewalk. They don't just walk around out there by accident. You have to, you have to deliver them to those sidewalks. Materials, you know, trying to get materials that are durable and attractive. Wide variety, some more modern in nature, some more traditional in nature and a lot of flexibility there, but keeping that attractiveness and that durability up. Windows, windows are actually really big. Windows give scale to a building. Windows allow visibility into those shops. You know, the blank wall is really repulsive to people, as I mentioned earlier. And so we work to make sure that the ground floor is 60% glass in the commercial areas so that people can see into those businesses. And it also helps make people feel safe. When you're along a blank-wall building, it feels like no one can see you. You can't see anybody, it's a little bit boring and a little bit creepy too. And so people tend to feel safer when there are eyes on the street. And so getting the windows right is a big step in that direction. So we've been doing a lot of outreach on these plans and this code to make sure that, one, you know, we're creating something that people really feel good about and that's workable, and two, to get people excited about this and invested in downtown. And so that outreach process began back in 2010. And in the, in the plans, we actually have a lot of information about all the different steps we went through, but there was a lot, a lot of outreach. And that really was, you know, baked right into the plan. We went out to the community and really baked that in. Since then, since we came back to this plan to get it finished, we have had five different workshops. One was with the Downtown Partnership Board. We had two more with downtown property owners and business owners and developers. We met with the original steering committees that helped us create these plans to get them up to speed and get any last feedback from them. And then the last one was the most fun. We had an open house at Art Hop a few weeks ago at Frank's Place. And it got a lot of people who were out to have a fun time coming in to see what we were doing and learn more about it and give us some ideas. And it was, it was a great time and people are, it was neat because people are really excited to see downtown come back and they like the direction we're going. That was, that was a fun night. So next, what is next? We went out for public comment on July 27th. So we're about halfway through that 45-day period right now. We made the hard copies of all these documents available here at City Hall and at the libraries across the community, also available online. We created a website, fresno.gov/downtownplan, so that people could download it that way if they prefer. We will close the public comment on September 12th. Make any final modifications that we need to, right after that. And then we're hoping to go to the Planning Commission on October 12th. And if that all goes well, then come back before you on October 20th. And so we're, you know, this is a, an effort that's been going on for about six years now. And it's, we're, we're almost to the finish line, it's very exciting. So that concludes my presentation, and happy to take any questions if there are any otherwise. We'll, we'll get back to work on this thing and get it back to you as soon as we can, so that you can, you can consider it.
Thank you very much, Dan, good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. First up is Member Brandau.
Hey, Dan, thanks a lot, and very good job, very thorough. And I, and I like the way your presentation followed a lot of pictures. Worked well for me.
Okay. I like pictures too.
You know, and we got into, when we were talking about the Development Code, I think I got dragged into a lot of meetings that ended up where we talked about Downtown Development Code. And you had some, so there's a different dynamic that you want than the rest of the city in general. And we have a couple of others, like the Tower District, where they want a very specific look. And so I appreciate all the hours you've put into this. I hope everything goes according to plan. You, I actually punched in really early, and you ended up answering a lot of my questions through the course of the presentation, but I do still have a couple left.
Sure.
And, but they're kind of only, they're kind of related on the side. First of all, is there a chance that you can give us an update on the Fulton Mall right now? Just a quick update on the construction?
You know, I, I...
That's not your thing?
It's not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not the expert. And so I'd, I'd be a little bit reluctant to, to do that, because I'm not getting day-to-day updates.
I'll find that out, I'll find that out.
If, if you don't mind, Assistant City Manager Kwan Shaker can give you an update as to how we're progressing with the mall right now.
All right, thank you, Bruce.
Good morning again. We are on schedule with construction on the mall. We started laying asphalt about a week ago, maybe 10 days ago, on the southern block, Inyo to, I guess it would be Kern. Construction has been ongoing on the northern part of the mall as well, and we're soon starting construction on the, the mid-block at Mariposa. We're also right now working on the sewer line in Merced. I did a hard hat tour about 10 days ago, and it looks fantastic. We've, we're setting the aggregate bands in the sidewalk. It's really starting to take shape. The art right now, I believe almost all of the pieces have been removed, with the exception of a couple. I've seen pictures of the restoration, it's all coming along great. So we're right now on schedule for completion, May 7th of 2017.
Okay, Oliver just...
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, and Wilma, Oliver just volunteered, he and I, for a hard hat tour, so we would like to set that up.
I, we will reach out to your office and get that set up.
And Councilmember Soria, with the three of us, the rest of them are on their own. We don't want a Brown Act violation.
We are happy, we are happy to accommodate that request.
And also, how about financially, is it, so it's on target as far as time-wise? How about budget-wise?
That's more of a question for Randall Morrison, but I have not heard that we have any issue. I think everything is status quo.
Okay, can you set up an appointment with me and maybe Randall? Or if you want to just find out the information and let me know?
Absolutely.
I want to make sure that we're on target budget-wise as well as time-wise. That was really important to the council vote, so, all right.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you, Wilma. Dan, I have, so back with you. And thanks, Bruce, for having Wilma come up and help me out on that. So not too long ago, we found out that we didn't quite hit requirements from the state for density, by right density, construction, our housing element was off, basically, right? So, and I had a, a quick conversation with Jennifer the other day about satisfying the housing elements by right, high-density stuff in downtown and along the corridors. Would that, along the transportation corridors, including Shaw, Blackstone, Kings Canyon, do, would we have to kick up our densities a little bit to meet tho, that housing element standard that the state is telling us that we're a little short on, or is it a different function?
Well, we're looking into that same concept right now to see if that is viable. I'm reluctant to go into it too much, and I could have Talia, perhaps, answer some questions if, if necessary. But what I will say is that downtown is a definite possibility there, because the, the density is actually unlimited. Whatever can be fit into the building envelopes that we've described, you can go up to, you know, 100, 200 units per acre, which I've seen work in buildings these size very easily. And so there's, we're, we're exploring that possibility to see if it's a fit.
All right, Talia, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just to echo what Dan is saying, we are exploring that possibility with the state, and I'm optimistic that they'll be receptive. We just need to make sure we can draft a program that they can feel comfortable with and identify it as compliant with the state statute, and it's in progress, and we're making meaningful progress.
Fantastic, thank you. I, I like, I like that concept, because so far, so far, we've had two projects come into District Two that are slightly higher density, and they've got the ability to build them by right, but the neighbors are coming unglued. And so I'd, I'd rather shift the burden of the, the density burden along the areas where we really need and want the density, like what you're talking about, get a couple 15-story buildings in there. So I do, again, Dan, appreciate the presentation this morning. That's, that's all for me, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Member Brandau. Next is Member Olivier.
And I also want to echo Councilmember Brandau's comments, that it was a very interesting presentation, very informative, and I appreciate you coming to the council to, you know, provide these, these kinds of updates. I'm, I'm a bit concerned about the, the number of housing units that are going in that are subsidized. Of the, what did you report? 4,000 new units over the past six, eight years?
About 600.
About, okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, but I was thinking about the population in terms of people. But, okay, so 600 new housing units that have gone in. How many of those have been completely market-driven versus how many, the percentage of how many that have received some kind of subsidy?
I don't know the exact percentage, but the vast majority have received some sort of assistance.
Okay, so, okay.
There have been a few that were private.
The reason why I'm concerned about that, and I hope that an update to the Development Code might change that, is to entice private dollars and private investment to come into downtown. Because I think then, that that's a victory for us. That's a victory for the city of Fresno, and, and for the, the administration and the city council, that we have fostered the kind of atmosphere where people are willing to risk private dollars as opposed to, you know, the Housing Authority, you know, I think that they do good work. You know, however great, the, the Housing Authority built something. But when we can say that, you know, we, our policies and our planning attracted private investment, I think that's a huge victory for us. And so while I applaud the, the attempts to, to get, because I know that, I know that people are so key to creating what we saw in Pasadena and Portland, people are so key to that. So I want this municipality to foster an environment where people want to choose us and, and developers want to risk private capital to come in. So I'll be, I'll be very interested in, in what's coming up on October 20th, and to, to, to help create that kind of, of an atmosphere. I know that's what you're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And I guess I've got like five questions, but I'll, I'll scratch them out, because people, people need to move on. And we can always meet after. How many years before we get, between adoption of, of, of this on October 20th and until we can put up a photograph of, of ourselves in that, in that slide presentation?
Right.
In terms of walkability and people, and retail not every 50 feet, but retail next to one another?
Yeah, right.
See, I was paying attention. How many years before that can be achieved?
You know, it's, it's hard to say exactly. It depends on some factors that are beyond anybody's control, global economic forces, and, you know, recessions and, and recoveries and things like that. But we're putting all of the pieces in place, in my opinion, and based on my past experience, that will help us have the quickest path forward possible. So we're making really strategic investments in public spaces and transportation with BRT, Fulton Street, so on and so forth. All cities that have had success have done that, and that's helped them to get there quicker. We're working on getting catalytic projects that will bring a, a burst of activity and kind of get the ball rolling. That's also been a key. And then this is one of the, one of the, the last and most important steps, is that regulatory reform, so that projects can come in, once the rents get a little healthier, and once there's interest, they can come in, buy land at the going rate, build a building at the going rate, rent it out at the going rate, and make that bottom line that they want without any of that assistance. And so the quicker we can get all three of those things really solidified, the catalytic projects, the public spaces, and the regulatory reform, the quicker we can get there. It seems like, you know, in my estimation, we're, we're going to see, especially with Fulton opening, we're going to see a bump right away. And then we're going to really see, you know, big improvements, barring any, you know, macroeconomic issues, you know, in the five to 10-year ranges, when it's really going to start coming together. The last community I worked in, that was the basic timeline that, that it followed, and, and the same steps were taken. And so I, I think that's a reasonable assumption, based on what we know.
Okay, all right, thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Member Olivier. Next is Member Quintero.
Hi, Dan.
Hi.
On the, in your, your presentation, I noticed you, you brought up green space in certain areas that you're going to go ahead and put up. Have you, in, in doing this planning and also looking for, I guess, safeguards or that type of thing, have you been at all working or getting input from the, the homeless coalition groups? Because what I've been noticing in that downtown area is getting, you know, calls from a few people where homeless are gathering in the evenings. They're not there during the day, but here they come in the evening, and then it just kind of, just becomes very, a very unfriendly territory and that type of thing. And I'm, I'm wondering with the green space, that you'll, you'll be able to have adequate enough lighting or safeguards to kind of keep that to, you know, a minimum or, or that type of thing with, especially with that, the downtown area coming around as it is, you're going to have a lot of, hopefully, the ability to attract more conventions, where folks are going to be walking around in the evenings, if it's a two- or three-day convention. And, and then, you know, let's walk over here, and then along the way, there's, there's a group of homeless folks there. So, I mean, have you gotten any input from them in terms of what they might recommend for, you know, additional lighting or security or that type of thing?
Well, there are a couple of aspects to this. The broader, you know, homelessness strategy is not dealt with through this plan. It's a broader effort, you know, outside of the, the scope of what a Development Code can do. However, we do look at several related things in the plans and the Development Code that will help us get there. And so one is we, we identify potential open spaces in areas where downtown is, is lacking them, and potential funding sources and a, and a strategy to, to get there. And with all of those, any of these new open spaces would be, you know, really good design and well-lit and, and safe feeling. The other aspect is, if we're going to have walkable streets, they need to be walkable at all times and comfortable to do so, and lighting is a huge part of that. And so we have a twofold strategy for that in the specific plan. Each street is identified as, as a fitting into one type or another. Does it, does it have bike lanes or not? Does it have one car lane in each direction or two? You know, and, and it, it classifies them. And then for each of those types, it says, okay, what kind of lighting are we going to use? What are the dimensions of this, what are the dimensions of that? So then as we make improvements, it can be done according to that grand plan to get the, the right types of streets and lighting and trees and everything where they, they do the most good. And then the second side is, as development comes, if their, the, the frontage right in front of their building is lacking in lighting or trees, then we have tools in the Development Code to make sure that that gets upgraded as the building gets built. So then that way, now we have a new area of activity, and the lighting gets approved. We get some shade trees that will mature over time and make that area more comfortable. And so as development happens, that public realm and lighting and other necessities also improve right along with it. So some of it will be done with us, by us, through capital improvements and grants, and, and then others will come with development. But we definitely have a strategy for improving lighting and other public realm safety kinds of things as we move forward.
Checking out what other, how other cities have done it, and the types of lighting that they're using and security?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, the, one of the key things is in the, you know, 60s or so, a lot of cities, 50s even, a lot of cities switched over to the kind of Caltrans-style Cobra Head lights in their downtowns. They were most concerned at that point in history with lighting up the roadway, and so the lights got higher and farther apart, and sidewalks in a lot of areas got, got kind of dark. So what we propose to get back to in, in the downtown area in these plans and, and code is, you know, lighting that's lower, instead of 20, 25 feet high, it's, you know, 12 or 14 feet high. They're more closely spaced together, so that you get that sidewalk lit up, and, and you get that, get back to that safe feeling in the evening hours that, in some areas is lacking. In some areas, we still have those original pedestrian lights still on the ground, and, and they work really well, and those areas tend to feel nicer at night. And then in other areas, we have the Cobra Heads, and it gets a little dark, and it's not always comfortable feeling after dark. So we want to incrementally get better on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Next is Member Brand.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for the presentation. Just a few comments, you know, being here eight years and observations, and really seeing a lot, a lot of change, you know, from the inception. And then when Jennifer got here, she came in, it was halfway through, but did a good job implementing the general plan and Development Code and all the other stuff we went through. But on housing, I think it's, and I realize there's affordable housing needs and so on. I think to continue the success of downtown, we need to bring in and put the focus on developing more market-rate housing. And I know, I understand, there's possibly single-family homes coming in, and that's really the missing element, to bring in homeownership, planned unit developments. What we had back in 2009, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program was a great program that engaged people that would normally not be homebuyers to become homebuyers. And the more homebuyers we have, I think the, the stronger the neighborhood becomes. And it's easier, as we move forward on the mall and other projects, to get that income level, get people there with disposable income that can go to restaurants, go to supermarkets, and baseball games, and all the, you know, the entertainment venues downtown to really, that's the final element. Once you get the people there with the disposable income, I think the retail will follow. And that'll be, you know, the three legs, you know, the office, residential, retail, to really put the synergy and really improve the, the, the demand side for making downtown a success. So it'll be interesting to see how we, how we, we do that. Hopefully, I'll be here actively to follow that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bates.
Thank Council, Council President. Really good presentation, Zach, I'm joining my colleagues in saying that. This was very informative. And I wasn't going to say too much, and then my, my, Councilmember Olivier really inspired me to make, make some remarks. I heard it. You've been doing that to me lately, you, you just, you're inspiring me. Yeah, I'm touched. But, you know, I wanted, I wanted to, in, in, in a, once and certainly echo Councilmember Olivier's, and, you know, as Councilmember Brand said, the idea certainly is to get a market-driven economy in downtown. And all of us are, are waiting for evidence of that. But I have a little evidence of that. And so Councilmember Olivier was, is right when he says, you know, we don't, we don't want the whole thing to be subsidized, which is true. And when are the private dollars going to start coming in? And I can tell you, just because I, you know, I represent part of downtown, I think you represent maybe another portion of it, that a lot of private money is coming in, actually. Yeah, and they are very, they're in the planning stages of really large investment projects. And they are very, they're in the planning stages of really large investment projects. I know the, the both side, both sides, South Stadium and the, the north side is, are, have very serious developers and investors in with their own money, considerable amounts of their own money. And what they're doing is they have, they're essentially leveraging their investment on everything we're doing. So, because we're opening up the street, that investment that we made kind of encouraged them and inspired them to make their own investment, which funny enough, I might add, is usually the case with downtowns across the country as we've seen. So, it's typically the case that the, the municipality will come in first, make those early, be the early investors, so to speak, and then the private dollars follow. So, I say that because I see that happening here. And if history is, is of any guide, then we should, we're going in the right direction. So, but you're right. And I think that the council has to make sure, and I'm so glad you brought that up, Councilmember Olivier, because we have to make sure that that is always the direction we're going, to making sure it is a market-driven economy, making sure that the public dollars we do invest in there, you know, won't be forever, but will be the catalyst. So, I just wanted to, to echo that and comment on that and agree with you and Councilmember Brand, and also to just kind of show kind of what's happening as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member Baines. The screen is clear. Thank you again for that great presentation.
My pleasure.
Really appreciated it.
Thank you.
And as Member Brandow says, great photos. Okay, folks, that's the end of the workshop and our morning agenda. So, we will go to closed session now. City Attorney, would you make the announcements, please?
Yes, in closed session, we have the city versus AIG, Menharris versus City of Fresno, the city versus Bureau Reclamation, although we'll probably hear that one after lunch. And also, the claims of Powell and others concerning the water.
Thank you very much. Will be adjourned until 1:30. Good afternoon and welcome to our city council meeting this August 25th, 2016. So, we were here all morning and now we have the afternoon session. And we have a quorum and so, we'll get started. First is the contested consent calendar. And what that means is we have a consent calendar in the morning. And if you don't, if you want to discuss an item on that calendar, you can pull it, we call it, which means put it for later discussion this afternoon. So, one item was pulled, item 1H by Member Soria. And so, we're gonna let her take, take that discussion to whatever level she wants. Member Soria?
Perfect. Thank you. And I think I just had a, a couple of questions regarding this item. So, one, is this item similar to what we did? And maybe Jerry, you could answer. This item similar to what we voted on, was it last council meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
So, same thing?
It's the exact same item. It has to go before council three times.
Oh, it's the same item.
There's a, there's a bill for introduction, then a bill for resolution, and then there's actually a hearing. And that'll be September 1st.
And going back to the, the staff report, we're anticipating revenues of $613,000?
Actually, that was the first year of, if you look at the historic.
Oh, 649, 569.
Yeah, 649, correct.
And that all goes to?
General fund.
General fund.
Yes.
But do we know what, I guess that would be a question for the?
That would be a city manager question.
City manager, see if they could tell us what, what it covered. But they're not here. So, I guess I'll ask them when they get back. Do you have other questions? In terms of what, what are these funds used for? Because they go to the general funds. I was wondering if there's a particular use that they've?
Council, general, general fund money goes into a pot that can be used for just about anything. General fund revenue wouldn't necessarily be earmarked for anything in particular.
Okay.
And I'm not certain that any of this is earmarked for anything particular.
Okay. Okay, those were all my questions. I think there was another, one of my colleagues that had a couple of other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Next on my screen here is Member Olivier.
I guess briefly, could you, I was finishing up correspondence from another issue. Can you briefly go over what the item is?
The item is?
It's to add new haulers to the?
New haulers to the non-exclusive roll-off franchise. We do this, it's actually called out in the, in the franchise agreement that we can do this once every year. And anyone who applies, who meets the requirements can actually join the non-exclusive roll-off franchise. We had two applicants and they're both listed in the attachment.
Are, are there haulers operating this kind of business in our city who are not a part of the franchise?
There are not supposed to be.
So, it's illegal for someone to deliver and, and pick up roll-off bins unless they're licensed by the city?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if we catch them, we typically give them a notice of violation, something similar to what code enforcement does. And we have actually added people to the non-exclusive roll-off franchise based on the fact that they were, they were caught hauling in town and, and did not have a permit. So, we give them a notice of violation. They then apply and we've added two that I'm aware of.
That way?
That exact way, yes.
Before this came into existence, what was the city's policy toward roll-off haulers?
Well?
It was just free and unregulated and unbridled capitalism, right?
It was, there were a lot of haulers who did not have applications into the city and we weren't familiar with who they were, other than what the county kept as a list of haulers.
But before?
We actually provided service as well.
Right. The city is, is one of the?
We're not now, but we were.
Not anymore?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And, and thank you. And I don't, I don't, I, I can make a motion to approve. I mean, that, that's fine. If, if there are some private haulers who want to become part of the program, then, then that's, that's, that's not the problem that I have. But I'll, I'll bring it up because I think, I don't, I don't believe that, that, Member Brandow or Member Soria, you were here when, when this came up. But basically, what existed before this program was, was basically how I describe it, just, total free market. We had, whoever had a bin and wanted to, to provide that service could put their, you know, ad in the, in the paper or on, on Google. And then, if you're looking for, if you're gonna gut your house and you want someone to put a roll-off so that you can throw the material away and have it hauled to the dump, then, then that's exactly what you would do. I, I think I remember this vote very well and it was a 6-1 vote. Because basically, what the City of Fresno did, it's, it's, in my view, this does not meet Webster's definition of a franchise. This is a registry and, and a tax that is passed directly through from the, the hauling companies to the person who is on a tight budget, perhaps renovating their kitchen. Basically, what it did was it made it illegal for people to just be capitalists and, and provide this service and required that these haulers register and join a registry with the City of Fresno whereby they would be taxed. My argument that where there was once no tax and all of a sudden, there's a tax and we're using the word franchise was rejected. And I was told, well, it's, it's a franchise. It's, it's not a tax. But where, where the city did not take money, all of a sudden, the city has a registry and is taking money. And so, this is something that, that, I mean, I would be interested in, in perhaps seeing this item returned to this council and, and take another look at it because now the dynamic of this board has changed. And I, I didn't see, there was not a public need, there was, there were not people crying out for regulation of the roll-off dumpster industry in the City of Fresno. I think it was a money grab. And that's why.
Would you like to have a workshop on this, maybe?
I don't know if a workshop would be, would be necessary, but I think that, that I'd like to see it come back and maybe I'll put it on the agenda for it to come back so that we can talk about it with, with a new dynamic here at the city. Because when, 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 when a government does something like this, that money doesn't just fall out of the sky and into the city's coffers. The money comes from the person who's clearing their yard or opening up a new business or redoing their kitchen or redoing their, their home or their roof. They now have to budget to pay us for the privilege of having a dumpster in front of their house to throw their, their refuse. And so, this is an issue that's important to me, so I, I'm hoping that it's gonna come back. But again, I, I made the motion, let's let them in so that they can be compliant and, and not operating in the black market for dumpsters. So, thank you.
Member, sorry. Thank you. Member Brandow?
Thank you, Council President. Clint, I, I totally get the philosophical argument. I think we should have probably already had it because this is like the second time it's coming up now, the second vote. And my main concern, Clint, on this particular contract is that the people that we are contracting with as the city, every trash collector that the city contracts with has to cover their trash on its way to the dump. Whereas, if you don't contract with the city, you might be out there and you could haul one of these roll-off bins or you could take your pickup down the freeway and, and it's, might be illegal for trash to blow out of there, but you can see what's happening on our freeway. So, I've got to respect that last week, and I think you were here, were you here last week? You were not here last week. See, we had a big conversation about this. This contractor that we're entering to contract with is, every load that they take to the dump is completely covered. So, at some, some regulation, I mean, that regulation is very valuable to our city because we're paying a high price for having trash everywhere.
Councilmember Brandow, I might submit to you that not all of the people who are on our list of approved haulers comply. And not all of the people who are operating illegally, you know what I'm saying? So, not everyone who's on the list of haulers covers their stuff and not everyone who's operating in the black market goes without a lid on the dumpster. I would be open to having that discussion of regulating the, the covers of the, of the dumpsters if it could be part of whether or not we repeal this tax on this industry.
The franchise opportunity to begin with, you mean? Right?
If, if you must use the word franchise.
That, yeah, that's what you're complaining about. Bruce, you're shaking your head.
Well, this is, you know, Mr. Schuber, how much does this franchise fee generate on an annual basis now for the general fund?
What we're currently projected at $649,000 this year and I suspect that it will actually tick over that just a bit. And that goes into the general fund, as we pointed out, which covers the repair and, and management of streets which these folks use. So, I, I think that the, I think the argument could be made that the franchise fee that they're paying is actually an offset to the, the additional traffic that is crossing those streets with those, those vehicles.
So, my point is on any, any given Thursday, whether it's a franchise fee or parking gate fees in the parks, understand that for every time we have that conversation, there's a, a fiscal reality that we're gonna have to deal with. This came about as a result of, of the fiscal realities that we were facing about four years ago. And at that time, it was, it was projected it was gonna generate about $350,000 a year. It was $350,000 that we had that meant we didn't have to shutter all of our parks or we didn't have to lay off any additional employees. Do you wanna have a conversation about repealing the franchise fee? And the issues, the issues that Steve, Councilmember Brandow brought up? The reality is, is there's six, there'll be a $650,000 to maybe $700,000 hole in the general fund going forward.
Well, I, I would, I would just submit to you all that, I mean, now that the city, speaking completely philosophically, now that the city is on a fairly solid financial footing, now would be the, the right time for, as policymakers, for us to return that money to the taxpayer who is ultimately footing that bill. But we can't and we won't because the money has been spent. Because the, that's what happens. Even when we don't need that money anymore, oh, we need it now because it's been spent on things like, you know, what have you, the general plan expenses.
Such as the safer grant that was just approved.
Well, then, could, would it be possible to levy, to, to create a franchise maybe for ice cream trucks? Because they use the road too. And then, the, the taxpayer can pay through the ice cream trucks to the city and then we can use that money for grants. I mean, it's, I'm not trying to be condescending. It's a philosophical discussion that I think we could have. But I think at the root of the discussion is, in, in bad times, we raised taxes in the City of Fresno. And now that, that times are better and we can possibly afford to return that money to its, the rightful owner, which is the taxpayer, we're unable to do that. So, I, I won't say anymore about it. I'm sure I'm boring everyone in this room. But I would, I would like to talk about it again when it's, when it's agendized.
And we have other franchise fee opportunities to talk about stuff as well. So, but I appreciate it. We started last week, Jerry, and I, I want the public to know that are listening because even just the folks that are here today for a different issue, but people that might connect with us on Comcast, we're very aggressively looking at the causes of litter on our highways. You and I, Bruce, and a couple of others are gonna meet with our trash haulers tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM.
Yes, sir, we are.
To have a discussion with, are we possi, you know, is there any way, is there something that we're missing as a city that we could improve upon?
And I would go so far as to say, Councilman, since we've called for that meeting, I've gotten an, an uptick in calls and emails and photos from those haulers who are now being very, very cautious about what's going on out there, almost to the point where they're reporting on each other, which is fine because?
Right.
It keeps them all accountable as well. Because there's only so many sets of eyes.
Right.
So, having each one of them work on this problem is exactly why we wanted to meet and have these discussions.
Yeah. And last week, you had, we had the actual personnel that we were gonna contract with, they were in the audience.
They, they are as well.
Oh, they, and we, we had them stand up last week and make sure, we, I grilled them. You talked about it. And we make sure that every load that they carry is gonna, and Clint, I know this is close to your heart as well, right? The, the trash and the, the weeds and all that, that stuff.
Absolutely.
So, at least this group, Clint, is gonna handle business with the city just above board. So, I'm gonna be supportive of it.
No, you do a fantastic job, of course.
I'll, I'll second your motion.
Okay, thanks. And may I suggest for the future that we institute maybe an Uber or Lyft franchise? Because it's, it's for the common good, so.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Passes 6-0 with Member Baines absent. Well, thank you, Jerry. Next, we'll go to Councilman with Presentations. First up is a proclamation of Molly Griffin Day in the City of Fresno. That's sponsored by City Councilmember Lee Brand.
We're here today to celebrate the life of Molly Griffin. This is Molly Day. She died tragically a year ago by a drunk driver. She's a young woman who had an extraordinary life and a gift for human beings. And I can't possibly put those words in perspective myself. I'm gonna have the parents of Molly to come up and explain the wonderful things your daughter did in her short time here.
Thank you, Councilman. Molly grew up here in Fresno. She always showed a very big and a kind heart, almost from the time she was a toddler on. As she grew, she was a volunteer in, in our children's ministry at our church and we went on several missions trips to Mexico to help serve the poor down there. And then, she took her big-heartedness into her academic career, deciding to become a nurse. She went through our community college system at Fresno City College and Clovis Community College, graduating with honors. And then, again, from Cal State University Fresno, again, with honors and had become a registered nurse within weeks of her graduation. And was, again, volunteering in, in various community events at the time of the accident.
A city clerk, would you read the proclamation, please?
Whereas, since childhood, it was evident that Molly Griffin had a loving and giving heart with a sweet spirit and plenty of ambition. And whereas Molly excelled in school at Maple Creek Elementary, Fresno Christian High School, the Fresno City College Honors Program, Clovis Community College, and Fresno State, where in 2012, she graduated with the license as a registered nurse. And whereas Molly gave her time and talents through several organizations, including the Sunday School class at her church, traveled on several mission trips to Mexico, volunteered with Kids' Day activities, drive-through flu clinics, sponsored a child through Compassion International, and helped with new nursing students. And whereas Molly's dream ended in the blink of an eye at 9:21 PM on Saturday, February 21st, 2015, in a tragic automobile accident. And whereas Molly's death is not only a great loss for the family who loved her, it is also a great loss to the community and those she served. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members do hereby honor and recognize the life of Molly Griffin and the example members do hereby honor and recognize the life of Molly Griffin and the example she led along the way. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim August 26, 2016 to be Molly Day in the city of Fresno.
Give her a big hand. And it's with, with pleasure and honor that I give you this proclamation as a small measure for the many things she's done, that I hope and pray that her legacy of love will continue on. Thank you.
I have one other thing, Councilman. The one part about Molly Day that our family and friends have established is, on her birthday, which is tomorrow, we're asking everybody that we know to do a random act of kindness for someone in her memory, and if you're so inclined to share that on social media with the hashtag #LiveLikeMolly. Last year, that reached somewhere around 20 states and into Canada and into England, and we're hoping for more this year. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time. Give her a hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a proclamation of Women's Equality Day 2016, sponsored by Member Soria.
Terry, do you want to come up? So, good afternoon, everyone. I am extremely excited to be here. So today, 96 years ago, women were granted the right to vote through the 19th Amendment. So it is very exciting to be here with Terry, who is part of the League of Women Voters. And so we're here to honor this day each year as Women's Equality Day, in which we commemorate the efforts of women and also men who fought for equality and continue to fight for equality, and who have recognized that our fight in terms of equality for women is not over. So we would like to recognize the local work that organizations like the League of Women Voters do every year to ensure that there is equality within our community here in the city of Fresno and throughout the Central Valley. These organizations, like the League of Women Voters, help educate and bring forth solutions to the problems faced by many women throughout our community. And so I would like to personally thank Terry Figs. She's a treasurer of the League of Women Voters for being here and representing not only her organization, but women throughout the city, and really helping them through the struggle of attaining equality. Because we know that there's a lot of work to continue to do, like equal pay for equal work. And so I know that those, that is one issue that women still continue to struggle every day. But again, I think it deserves some recognition that 96 years ago, together, men and women fought so that we did, we, and I feel privileged to have the right to actually vote. So here, Terry, I will give you this proclamation. So on behalf of us, the city of Fresno, and if you could, go ahead, city clerk, read it for the record.
Whereas the women of the United States have not been entitled the full right and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to male citizens of the United States. And whereas the women of the United States have united to assure that these rights and privileges are available to all citizens equally, regardless of sex. And whereas the women of the United States have designated August 26 the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment as symbol of the continued fight for equal rights. And whereas the women of this century have begun to establish themselves in a more political and higher educational role in the United States and are commended and supported in their efforts. And whereas the organizations and groups that work in the area of voting rights commemorate this day by holding events and seminars in which they address issues and problems currently faced by women in the country. Schools all over the nation take the time to educate students of the difficult and continued journey of women's rights movement. Now therefore be it resolved that we Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members do support August 26 of each year designated as Women's Equality Day in commemoration of the day in 1920 on which women of America were first given the right to vote, and that day in 1970 on which a nationwide demonstration for women's rights took place. And we do hereby proclaim Women's Equality Day as August 26, 2016 in the city of Fresno.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and let Terry just say a few words.
Thank you so much for this recognition. Each year, the League of Women Voters of Fresno gives a Women's Equality Day award also to honor a Fresno County woman who has led the way towards establishing the equality of women in civic life and workplace, and who upholds the high standards of the league in a leadership role in the areas of government, natural resources, or social policy. This year, we presented the award to Deborah Aikida for her many years of community service, most recently as president of Clovis Community College. So thank you very much again. We do appreciate this recognition.
Again, Terry, thank you for all the work that you guys do through the League of Women Voters, and we'll continue to do the hard work to really attain equality for all women. Thank you.
Do register to vote and vote in this coming election. It's greatly needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is number four, City Council, 4A, a resolution condemning Islamophobia in the city of Fresno.
Thank you, Council President. So I am the sponsor of this item, and I do first want to thank Reza for coming to us and for bringing a group of folks to talk about the issue of Islamophobia and how it impacts our community. So not only because you came forth and really highlighted the importance of this issue, but also in light of August being Muslim Appreciation Month, which this year, the California Assembly declared that August, we would take August to appreciate really the hard work of the Muslim community. And so I think that it is great timing to bring this forward. And so today, I bring before the council a resolution not only that appreciates and acknowledges the contributions of the Muslim community in the Central Valley, and their contributions as educators, developers, we have farmers, entrepreneurs, doctors, nurses, civic leaders, engineers, philanthropists, they have it all. And so they are great contributors not only to the city of Fresno, but to our entire Central Valley community. But we also recognize the importance of publicly condemning hate speech, racism, and xenophobia against fellow Muslims and Islam. We know that hate speech and Islamophobia is extremely toxic and un-American, and it creates an unsafe and divisive environment for Muslim, Middle Eastern, South Asians, and even others who may simply look to be familiar, be of familiar descent. So today, the city of Fresno, with this resolution, really condemns the type of hateful and inflammatory rhetoric, and is committed to foster an all-inclusive and safe environment that welcomes and respects all of its residents throughout the city of Fresno, and really showing leadership throughout our Central Valley and our state, that we will embrace diversity, that we condemn any of these, these types of behavior and hate speech, because it does create divisiveness. And so I'm very proud to be able to introduce this resolution, to demonstrate that as a city, we are welcoming and that we value the contributions of our Muslim Americans to the city of Fresno. I know that there are a number of folks here, and I want to thank you guys for taking time out of your busy days to be here. But I know that, Reza, maybe you want to come and say a few words, and there's a few other folks that would like to speak, if that's okay, Council President?
That's fine.
So, Reza, if you want to come on?
Good evening. Greetings of peace to everyone and everybody who came out today to support. As you said, it is wonderful timing that you guys vote on this today in this month, because this month was declared Muslim Appreciation Month by our state. First of all, I would like to thank Councilmember Esmeralda Soria and Terry Cox for their leadership in this effort, and their boldness in standing with marginalized and forgotten communities always. To Council President Capriolio and all council members who took time to meet and share concerns and comments to help refine the language of the resolution, and also to, for your leadership and your bold leadership, and all city staff, we thank you, and we look to your leadership for a community of Fresno that will eradicate itself of ignorance, hatred, and all else that tears us apart and creates disunity. In addition to the members of the Muslim community who have already taken ownership of their citizenship and their rights to demand justice and expect respect, dignity, and an environment free of hateful acts, I want to specifically thank some organizations that are here today in support of our resolution against hatred, xenophobia, and Islamophobia. So if I could ask you, when I call on your organization, stand up, let's show the support, how many of us are here to support something like this? First of all, the members of the Central Valley Islamic Council and the general Muslim community, please stand up. And then that organization that really helped us work on this, stay standing up, please. Faith and Community, who are represented today by Thomas Wyler, Sakana Hussain, and also a few others that got pulled away for a meeting with the mayor. Pastor Chris Breedlove of the UCC Church, Dr. Sue Kapoor of the Human Rights Coalition of Central Valley, Erfan Ali of the Interfaith Alliance of Central California, Jim Grant of the Diocese of Fresno, Steve Ratsliff Emeritus of the Mennonite Community Church, Mary Ann LaComte of the Bishop Steinbeck Advocacy Committee, Stephanie Bibb of Clovis Community College, another great partner, Phil Traynor, Camille Russell, Dan Yaseen of Peace Fresno and Peace Madera, Reverend Henry Opuda of the Way Ministries, I know I see more of you out there, Rabbi Rick Weiner of the Temple Beth Israel, Saab Masada and Marian Masada of the United Japanese Christian Church, Reverend Tim Cuttsmark of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Fresno, and so many others, Willie Lopez of Mi Familia Vota, I saw you also, and everybody else who came to support this resolution, stand up and take ownership that this is what we're doing. We're taking a stand against hatred, xenophobia, Islamophobia, and anything else that wants to take Fresno and rip it into different pieces. Give yourselves a hand. Also, I can't forget to mention now Reverend Bryson White, who was here with us until very recently, until he got called away, who was instrumental in bringing this forward. And to all those who supported the effort but couldn't be here today, the many religious leaders, social justice advocates, civic leaders, educators, and wonderful residents of our beautiful Fresno, thank you all.
Respected President and council members, good afternoon, and peace be with you. Salaam alaikum. And also, members of the audience, peace be with you. This is a significant day for many citizens and residents of the beautiful city of Fresno, Muslims and non-Muslims. For decades, the Muslim community contributed to the well-being of this city and also the Central Valley in their capacities. Councilmember Soria already mentioned the different capacities of Muslim members who contributed to the economy and well-being of this city. We are proud citizens of Fresno. Today, by voting yes to this resolution, you make this a very significant and special day, and you make history by recognizing and acknowledging the contribution of the Muslim community in this area. Today, you have an option to put a smile on the face of all those who are attended, and many others who could not attend, make them happy for you recognized by your love and respect to the hard work of many of citizens of this town and city. Recognizing them, you put beautiful smiles on their face. I'm truly thankful for your vote, yes vote today, and especially thankful for Councilmember Soria and for, thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and address the council? This is an opportunity. And, Reza, you're organizing from the front of the room, the back of the room?
We did four other names. So, then Imam.
Of course. Of course. If they'd like to come forward and be ready to speak, that's fine with us.
This is a wonderful occasion for us to be gathered today. Not only is this a resolution condemning xenophobia and Islamophobia in particular, this is an opportunity for us as a city that believe in one another to affirm the beautiful Muslim community that's a part of Fresno. By far, one of the best things about living in Fresno, and I think we would all agree, the best commodity we have in Fresno is the cultural and religious diversity of our people in Fresno. There are about 40, 60 different religions and cultures represented in our beautiful city, and many of our Muslim friends are great contributors to Fresno, working for peace, working for quality of life, working for justice. I've been privileged to pray and worship with the Islamic Cultural Center in Fresno, and we've extended, my congregations have had Imam of the Islamic Cultural Center of Fresno teach in our congregation, and this is the kind of cooperation we need as Fresno. And so for all of my Muslim friends gathered here today, for the Imams gathered here today, thank you on behalf of Fresno. Thank you on behalf of all those here today for all of your many contributions and beautiful gifts of generosity to our community. Thank you, Council Two. Thank you, Esmeralda. Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much. I see our next speaker's on his way up here. Good afternoon. Glad to have you here.
Good afternoon. To the honorable council members, all of you, I am Imam Abdul Shaheed Mohammed. My pleasure to have this occasion where Fresno has been known as an all-American city. This resolution proves that we all are a family, and we understand the need for relationships. We do not exist, nor can we multiply without relationships. We also know that diversity is the nature of the universe, therefore diversity is unity. We, as the Muslim community, strive to be contributors, strive to be people of faith as well as productive citizens in the various capacities that we all live in the city and work to make Fresno a better place. With that being said, we feel Joseph's Code of Many Colors is being redefined and addressed properly as humanity is one, God is one, creation is one. We appreciate your support, and we ask that you be with us on this occasion for the most positive results. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, Reverend.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Tim Cuttsmark, the minister at the Unitarian Universalist Church here in Fresno, and I've just celebrated my first anniversary in Fresno, growing very much to love the city. What has literally blown my mind, though, is the interfaith cooperation and respect that exists in Fresno. I'm coming from the Boston area, and nothing like this existed back on the East Coast. I think what Fresno has in the cooperation and the respect between so many different faith traditions that believe so many different things, yet we come together and we're bound together by love. And so the vote today is a reaffirmation of what is one extraordinary thing about Fresno, and that is the love that binds us all together, no matter our faith. Please vote yes.
Thank you very much.
I would like to ask my dear friend and brother Jimmy Grant to come forward, because we have a great relationship between the Muslim and the Catholic community, so I would like him to also. So, I would like him also to say a few words. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. City council members, one person who would have loved to have been here is Bishop Armando Ochoa. One reason because he's going to be celebrated by the Muslim American Chaplains Association with their annual award for what he does in ministry in the prisons. And it is the group of Muslim chaplains that are thanking him for his tremendous commitment to the incarcerated here in the valley. Bishop has often been at celebrations at the Islamic Center, following the tradition of Bishop John Steinbach, a good, good friend of the Islamic Cultural Center of Fresno. I want to thank our Islamic community for the tremendous connection that we have always felt as the Roman Catholic community with our brothers and sisters, not only from the ICCF, but from all the Muslim communities here in town. And thank you for giving me this chance to speak for the bishop, to let you know that this is a resolution that he signed and would want to be passed. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Dr. Kapoor. Good to see you, my friend. Welcome.
I'm Dr. Kapoor from Fresno State. I stand here in solidarity and peace with my Muslim brothers and sisters in supporting this resolution, which I'm pretty sure you're going to pass it without any hitch or hesitation. This is the kind of resolution that you should be passing. This is the kind of resolution that reflects tremendous amount of support from the community and that you have probably heard about it like that. We are not here to support the resolution, but we are here also to see that city of Fresno plays a major role in bringing the various diverse communities and elements together to keep peace and civic peace of our community, which is very essential in addition to the economic and social development that we are all intending to accomplish. So, this is a way to pay tributes not only to the hard-working Muslim brothers and sisters who have experienced tremendous amount of prejudice and discrimination. In spite of that, in spite of that, they have been our best citizens and most disciplined citizens and hard-working citizens of our community, and their contribution, whatever they have done so far is very well-known in the history of this community. So, I fully support this resolution, and I hope you will also think, adopt some measures so that our city engages in some kind of a constructive dialogue among the various ethnic elements of our community so that we could keep the peace together. Thank you very much and wish you all the best. Peace.
Thank you very much. Sure, Reza.
Council President Capriolio, I have one more gentleman who would love to say a few words.
Certainly.
Reverend Saab Masada from the United Japanese Christian Church. Is that okay?
Please.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the council. I'd be so bold to say I speak on behalf of 120,000 Japanese-Americans, majority who are Americans, citizens, and the others who are immigrant parents who were loyal residents since early 1900. In 1942, because of the terror of war and of hysteria of war, we were incarcerated in America's 10 concentration camps. At that time, I wish we had the kind of support that is being expressed today for our Muslim friends. Back then, hardly anyone ever spoke up. All the officials and the government leaders joined in in this racist campaign to get rid of the Japanese people living primarily on the West Coast of the United States. It happened not because of Pearl Harbor, but Pearl Harbor was exploited by the anti-Japanese movement for 40 years since early 1900s to get rid of the Japanese people living on the West Coast. Today, I'm hearing the same kind of fear of terrorism used to show the Islamophobia that's been expressed by too many within our country. And so, I'm proud that our city council is considering this wonderful resolution to fight Islamophobia and to say that Fresno is not one of those who will support such a terrible mentality and mindset. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to add my thanks for being here and specifically want to thank the Islamic Cultural Center in my district for all the good work they do with the university and the citizens in that deprived, poor area. So, thank you guys again for all you do for the city and my district for. So, with that in mind, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Motion by Member Soria, seconded by Member Baines. All those, we'll take electronic vote. So, you'll see it on the screen. Did you want to say something?
I think that there is a few members that wanted to make comments before the vote.
Okay, Member Baines, thank you.
Okay. And I'll be brief. I think everything that, everything that can be said has been said, but as often they say that, but it just hasn't been said by me yet. So, no, in all honesty, I think this is going to be a very proud moment for the city of Fresno and its residents and this council. I want to thank my friend and colleague, Councilmember Soria, for bringing this forward. I certainly want to thank Reza for meeting with us and explaining the necessity of this type of symbolic action. A lot of times, we know these are symbolic in nature, but symbolism matters, and I don't think that that should be lost. And so, I understand the symbolism that this is about. I am fully supportive of it. We are a diverse community, not just by race and ethnicities, but also by faith. I think it's wonderful that we have so many faith traditions here, standing with the Muslim community today. So, you can also count this city council member to be standing with the Muslim community today. Thank you again, Councilmember Soria, and thank you to all of you who worked really hard to get to this point.
Thank you, Member Baines. Next, we'll have Member Brand.
Just wanted to say a few words, and I've met with many people out there. We've worked together, and you guys have supported me in things I've done. But I want to make a brief statement to put things in perspective. And all the words that are spoken today will be whispers in the wind many years from now is what every person holds in their heart that is a true measure of their love of their fellow man. And my hope, my prayer, is that this heart will be passed on to their children, their grandchildren, and for many generations to come, that mankind will always seek to find the better natures of their, the better angels of their nature. And I want to thank you, everybody, for coming. Be proud to support your resolution.
Thank you very much. Now, the screen is clear. So, we'll do an electronic vote. So, everyone gets your cameras ready. And if you support this resolution, it's a yes vote. If you oppose it, it's a no vote. So, let's vote. Passes seven. Oh, congratulations. Again, congratulations and thank you for all being here. We really appreciate it.
Just in thanks, I would like to say in our city, like everybody's been saying, hatred has no place. Bigotry needs to be eradicated. Disunity and enmity have to be eliminated, and then justice will reign. Racial justice, economic justice, social justice, environmental justice. Once again, on behalf of all of us and on behalf of the entire community, I want to thank each and every one of you for your vote and also for your step forward to committing to a more just and a more unified Fresno. Thank every one of you. Thank you, Councilmember Soria.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We have a little bit of unfinished business, and we're going back into closed session. City Attorney, is there an announcement for closed session?
We are returning to closed session. We already made the announcement. We may have an announcement after closed session.
Thank you.